This is the noting board of Examiners and Appeals meeting for May 13th, 2021. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Jonathan Lang.
Here.
Dale Smythe.
Here.
Jackie Savina.
Here.
Skylar Quinn.
Here.
Andrew Ramadahl.
Here.
Monica Emmerton is excused and Tanya Hickok is absent. Thank you.
First order of business, or second order of business, first order was roll call. Second order of business are minutes. We have minutes for Thursday, April 8th, 2021. Can I have a positive motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any additions or deletions or edits for the minutes? Okay. Who is the second? Who seconded this motion?
Jonathan.
Jonathan, sorry. Seeing none, is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. The next order of business is the special order of business. Are there any disclosures? I don't have... Okay, seeing no disclosures, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have resolutions for approval, Resolution 2021-006 and Resolution Can I have a positive motion, please?
This is Andrew. I'll move.
Say again.
This is Andrew, and I'll move.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
You're gonna have to say who you are.
This is Skylar, second.
Oh, thank you. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there any objections? Is there any objection to the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. And we'll move on. No appearance requests, no unfinished business or actions of public hearings. There's nothing on the regular agenda. And we're to the public hearings portion of the agenda. There are two variance hearings that we'll hear tonight. And the procedure for variance hearings is in Regulation 2112-520. The Chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. And the case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. So this is the procedure to be followed. The Board shall hear and rule on any objections to sufficiency of notice. The Board shall hear a brief presentation outlining the variance. And on the conclusion of the staff presentation, the Board members and the applicant may have, may then direct questions to the staff through the Chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the Board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. The applicant, including all of his or her representatives, has 10 minutes for the presentation and may reserve time for rebuttal at the end of the public hearing. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the Board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the Chair. The hearing that shall then be opened for public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes, individuals have three minutes. Time is kept by the Secretary. The display at the front will be greened within one minute of the allowed time and then will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. And at the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. All persons who testify may be questioned by the Board, the staff, or the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The Board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing subsequent, for subsequent adoption by the Board at a later meeting. A concurring vote of the majority of the fully constituted membership of the Board, minus those excused by complex of interest, shall be required to grant variance. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be substantially met. The parties shall have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. So, first case. First case is case number 2021-0043. And the petitioner is Allen Bram. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
On April 21, 2021, a total of 82 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with code. No public comments have been received, and the Hillside Community Council did not provide comment.
Is there any objection? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And before we get started, I do need to correct page one of the staff report to read May 13th rather than May 15th. And in the request, it is a 25-foot side yard setback rather than a 30-foot. There was a typo on there. This is a request for a variance from AMC 2106020 to allow proposed addition to encroach 11.5 feet into a required 50-foot front yard setback and 4.8 feet into a required 25-foot side yard setback. The proposed addition of a two-story structure with a two-car garage has a building footprint of approximately 857 square feet. This property was previously granted a dimensional variance for the existing single-family home and two-car garage to encroach eight feet into the required 50-foot front setback, found on page 22 of this application. This dimensional variance request will increase the front yard setback encroachment from eight feet to 11.5 feet and will encroach 4.5 feet into the western side yard setback. In order to approve this variance, the application must substantially meet the following eight standards. Standard A is met. The subject parcel is encumbered by Little Campbell Creek that runs east-west through the property. Per AMC 2107020B, there's a total stream setback protection of 50 feet on either side of this creek. The stream protection setback totals approximately 16,500 square feet, or 33% of the overall square footage of this parcel. Standard B is met. The site is encumbered by Little Campbell Creek and poses an undue hardship on the subject parcel. Strict application of this code would deprive the applicant rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. Standard C is not met. While Little Campbell Creek creates a peculiar physical condition of the land, the original single-family home was not placed in a conforming location. The proposed addition increases the previously granted encroachment and is self-imposed. The petitioner has not demonstrated that there are no conforming alternatives. Standard D is met. Given the character history and zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear that granting of this variance will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. The distance to the most affected neighbor would be approximately 150 feet to the west. The application also includes non-objection letters from a neighbor, for, excuse me, non-objection letters from a number of neighbors. Standard E is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the R6 zoning district. Standard F is met. It does not appear that this encroachment will result in any negative impacts to the health or safety of people of the municipality. Due to Little Campbell Creek, the petitioner is seeking this variance to avoid disturbing the stream setback protection. Standard G is met. The standard is not applicable to detached single-family residences. Standard H is not met. The proposed addition will increase the encroachment to include a two-story structure, 11.5 feet in the required 50-foot front yard setback and 4.8 feet into the required 25-foot side yard setback. While Little Campbell Creek does pose a hardship on a portion of the subject parcel, the applicant has not demonstrated that there are no other conforming alternatives. AMC 2103240G requires that all eight standards be substantially met. The Department finds that standards A, B, D, E, F, and G are met, and standards C and H are not met. The Department recommends denial of the variance. If, after a public hearing, the Board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to the conditions bottom page six of your staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the Board?
Through the Chair, I have a question.
Regarding standard C, or finding C, after the first sentence that says a standard is not met, there's a follow-up paragraph that says the standard speaks to the peculiarity of the lot. That verbiage, is that verbiage from code somewhere? Or is that derived from anywhere?
Thank you. Through the Chair. It's not in AMC Title 21, but I believe that it's a legal standard that we use for dimensional variances to provide the definition of the conditions in physical circumstances. So it's not in, I don't believe it's in Title 21.
Okay, just ask because on past, or in this case, when it is illegal, when you're citing something illegal, it typically says the Alaska Supreme Court or it references some other legal means. That's why I asked the question. Thanks.
Are there any other questions of the staff by the Board? Seeing none. Do we have the applicant or the applicant's representative? Yes, we have.
Yeah, hi, this is Ron Thompson through the Chair. I wanted to thank Carly for a clear declaration, or clear understanding of the items. And there were two items that I'd like to bring forward and talk about a little bit, where the items C and H, basically it's the same information presented on both of those that, although I feel like I did describe it in the plans, I think the as-built and other items in the package show the problems that we have with regard to trying to locate this any other location than what it is. On the east side of the building, if you look at the as-built or the plot plan, the septic system is in over there. And there's a, obviously, when you do septic systems, you have to have an alternative septic system. And that's also on that east side of the building. So if we, I don't believe that we can add a building on that side because then we would have a problem with the alternative septic system site. And that's a kind of, just a kind of thought. It's pretty clear. I mentioned it in the wording in the beginning of the paragraph, but I could have probably added a little bit more language in the body of answer to item C that dealt with the septic system on that east side of the property. The rear of the property, I did see she mentioned that there was 33%. That might be one of the creek setbacks. But we have the other creek setback in the back. And then the creek where it's located also cuts off the last back rear 20, 30 feet. It's in the 50-foot setback anyway on the rear. So basically, it's 63% of the 1.1 acres in a R6 lot that's unusable period because of the creek and the location there. Then we have on the front of the property a 50-foot setback that the previous owner has put a location and got, when they placed the building, they got a variance for that eight-foot setback violation in the front, that they have a variance in that. But we're trying to build a second floor that's eight foot wide on the second floor. That's in that same, it's just vertical up from the garage in that place. Therefore, it's eight foot by eight foot, 64 square feet on the second floor. It's trying to just go straight up from the garage that exists. The encroachment that increases the setback from eight feet to 11.5 is, if you look at the plot plan, is because the cul-de-sac bulb starts curving in toward the lot on that west side of the property. Therefore, the increase that we're doing on the second floor really doesn't increase the setback that's already there. It's the garage moving to the side yard setback that goes into the side yard setback 4.8 feet. But because of the cul-de-sac bulb, it brings that bulb about three and a half feet closer to that corner of the building. So although it's less, the septic prevents us from building on the east side. The creek setback prevents us, we're almost right up against the setback on the south side. The north side, we're up against the setback. And then on the west side, we're up against a setback. And we tried to minimize this to get a functional garage for Allen. And the plans kind of show that this is not like an oversized house. It's like 1,900 square feet in a typical three-car garage for parking is what we're trying to get. And so therefore, we believe that, we tried to do everything to fit everything on the site, but we have no alternative except to go on the west side of the property. Allen and the neighbors have talked about this. And we provided an approval letter that it doesn't change the feel of the area. It doesn't, and all of the neighbors on the entire cul-de-sac were all in support of Allen receiving this variance. So I believe we have met item C and item H. And maybe we just needed to clarify a little bit better verbally here why we can't build in those other locations. And it's one of the most severely impacted properties I've seen in the R6 area. You know, it's really odd to see in a R6 that you can, you know, the setbacks and the creek setbacks and all of this severely limit this and trying to just be able to build a shop and a garage on this house. You can see in the pictures and the drawings that we really had no alternative to go anywhere but this. And we tried to keep it to a minimum. We didn't try to increase it in the front, but the cul-de-sac bulb increased it. And on the side, we tried to keep that to a minimal. And we're sitting at about 4.8 feet into the side. So we believe that, we're hoping that you take a look at this and see the severity of all of these cases and that you would see that the standard C and standard H are in fact met because we really have no alternative to put this, a garage that many people in the R6 enjoy. It's not like we're putting in a monster-sized garage either. So anyway, we really tried to limit it. And we tried, we feel like the impacts on this property, this is the only place it can go on the property legally without, just not, the only other option is not to build anything. So we're hoping that you can see that and that you can agree that item C and H, in addition to all the other items that the municipality did agree that are met, that C and H could be met as well based upon the constriction and the testimony that I provided here. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. You have 3 minutes and 25 seconds for rebuttal. Are there any questions of the applicant by the Board members? Seeing none, are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did anyone sign up for public?
No, Madam Chair, there is not.
Okay. Then we don't have anybody from the public to speak. And, give that a little bit to percolate. So there's not much to rebut. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
Through the Chair, thank you. I think the petitioner's representative did a sufficient job in explaining why there are no conforming alternatives. That information was provided not through the narrative, so that was helpful. Thank you.
And the applicant, do you have any addition? Do you have more than three minutes?
No, I felt that I did include it up in the original narrative at the beginning of the document, but not maybe in the actual specific C and H criteria. I felt that it was in there. And I apologize for that. I'll make sure that's in those exact criteria locations in the future.
Okay, thank you. With that, the public hearing is closed and the matter rests with the Board. Could I have a positive motion, please?
Motion to approve?
No, you gotta have more than that.
This is Andrew, I'll second.
In case, motion to approve in case 2021-0043, a variance from AMC 21.06.020A, Table 21.06-1-1, to allow a proposed addition to encroach 11 and a half feet into a required 50-foot front yard setback and 4.8 feet into a required 25-foot side yard setback, subject to conditions.
On page?
On page...
Six.
Six of the staff packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Andrew, I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn, we speak to your motion, please.
Through the Chair, I think the applicant provided some new information in his testimony as to exactly how the, or just other limitations that the lot has with the septic system and the reserve area for it. And I do think that there's not a lot of area to have the addition of a garage. There's currently a shed that's encroaching in the side yard setback. And given the zoning being a low-density, single-family residential area, I think that the intended use is for people to have single-family homes and enjoy garages. And based off what the applicant provided, I think that standard C and standard H of the staff packet have been met.
Who seconded? Andrew, Mr. Ramadahl, do you have anything to add?
I don't, I agree with that sentiment. I think the applicant's representative did a good job of explaining the exhaustion of looking at alternatives that would further minimize the variance. So I'm in agreement.
This is Dave Hale. Maybe I missed it, but because of the motion, uh, subject to the Department recommendations on five and six.
There's just recommendations on page six, and Mr. Quinn did reference that. Mr. Hale?
Yeah, I have a little choppy on the phone. I just didn't hear it. I just thought it should be in there if we missed it.
Yeah, he did. Anything else? Anybody else have any, anything to add? Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing none. Oh, we have to vote. Okay, we will vote.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Savina?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Ramadahl?
Yes.
And Chair McKay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, motion passes and the variance is granted. And one more time, the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. I don't know why you'd want to appeal it, but maybe. All right, moving on, move on to the next case. All right, so, case H2, case 2021-0047. And the applicant is Aaron Potter. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Yes, on April 22nd, 2021, a total of 122 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with procedures outlined in Anchorage Municipal Code. No comments are received from members of the public or the Gerwood Board of Supervisors. Also, just note, the dimensional variance was presented as an informational item at the April 12th Gerwood Board of Supervisors Land Use Committee meeting and the April 19th Gerwood Board of Supervisors General Board meeting. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you, Chair McKay. So this is a request for a dimensional variance for roof overhangs. There is an existing single-family home constructed in 1981. At that time, there, at that time, there's an as-built that shows the house with an attached deck and stairs. The property was zoned GR2 in 2005. So the deck and stairs are legal, non-conforming structures. However, the roof overhangs built over the deck and stairs were not constructed until 2010. So they are not legally, non-conforming structures. The applicant would like to construct a garage using 10-foot side setbacks at both the north and south side property lines. Please note in my staff report, I referenced the structure as a shop. In a phone call conversation just prior to this meeting, he thought a garage better... described the purpose for the structure. In the GR2 zoning district, there's a required 20-foot setback at the front and 10 feet at the sides. However, in Girdwood, there is flexibility with the side yard setbacks, so the side setback may be reduced by 5 feet on one side, and the amount of that setback reduction can be added to the opposite side. So the, one of the setbacks could be reduced to 5 feet, and the other one could be increased to 15 feet as an option. However, the applicant is asking for a dimensional variance for the roof overhang using the 10-foot side setbacks, and then in addition, the variance for the roof overhang to encroach into the front setback. There are eight standards that must be met in order to grant the variance. I'll analyze the request for the variance in the front setback and the side setback separately as I go over the standards. So A is there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the property. These can include wetlands. This standard is met for both the front setback and the side setback, as Class C wetlands, Class C wetlands cover approximately 30% of the parcel. Standard B is that because of the, these physical circumstances, the strict application of the code would create an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. For the front setback, the standard is substantially met. The strict application of the code would create an undue hardship and prevent the applicant from developing an accessory building, which is a right commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. The roof overhang of the stairs is also integral to its safe use. For the side setback, the standard is found to be not met because the property owner could amend the design for the proposed garage to conform to the side setback requirements and then use the flexible side setback opportunity in code. Amending an initial design is not an undue hardship, and the presence of the Class C wetlands does not impede upon the ability for a differing design configuration that meets current code standards. Amending the design would not greatly increase development into Class C wetlands. Standard C is that the hardship is not self-imposed, does not result merely from the actions of the applicant, and is not just an inconvenience. For the front setback, this standard is met. There's no flexibility to increase the front setback to make the roof overhangs legal. And again, the roof overhangs are directly tied to the safe use of the stairs and the ... Sorry. And the stairs are a legally non-conforming structure, and the roof overhangs are directly tied to their safe use. For the side setback, the standard is not met because this results from a self-imposed action of the applicant that may be remedied by amending the design of the new structure and using the flexible side yard setbacks. Standard D is that if the variance is granted, it will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. This standard is substantially met for both the front and side setback requests. Given the character, history, and current zoning of the neighborhood, the granting of this variance will not adversely affect use of adjacent properties. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors and neighbors were informed. No objections were received by individuals, the community council, or agencies. Standard E is that the variance would not change the character of the zoning district. This standard is met for the front setback. The GR2 district describes established residential neighborhoods with single-family, detached, and two-family development, and the intent is to allow development to continue in a manner consistent and compatible with existing development patterns. For the side setback, the standard is not met. A variance for the side setback is not in keeping with the intent of Anchorage Municipal Code. Granting a variance from side setbacks could set a precedent of allowing variances when there are reasonable alternatives available to meet code, and over time, this could change the character of the zoning district. Standard F is that the variance would not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. This is met for both the front and side setbacks. Granting the variance would not result in any negative impacts, and the property owner stated on his application, he is unaware of unsafe conditions created by the roof overhangs. Standard G is that persons with disabilities are provided access. This standard is met for both the front and side setback. The Americans with Disabilities Act is not applicable to this privately-owned residential property. And finally, the last standard, standard H, is that the variance is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land. For the front setback, this standard is met. It is reasonable to grant a variance for the roof overhang, integral to the use of the legal non-conforming stairs, and it would allow the accessory building project to move forward. For the side setback, the standard is not met because it is not reasonable to grant a variance for the side setback when there's the option to use the flexibility of side setbacks in Girdwood. That would easily make the existing roof overhangs conform to code. Then lastly, I'll just summarize the department recommendation, which is again broken out by the front setback and the side setback. For the front setback, the department finds standards A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H are substantially met, and the department recommends approval of the variance, subject to the following conditions, which are, one, the approval is to allow for a roof overhang of 6.1 feet into the required 20-foot front setback within the GR2 zone, as shown on the aswell survey, and, two, a notice of zoning action be filed. For the side setback, the department finds that standards A, D, F, and G are substantially met, but standards B, C, E, and H are not met. Therefore, the department recommends denial of the variance. However, if, after this public hearing, the board does find that all eight standards are met, the approval should be subject to the following conditions, which are, one, the variance approval would allow a roof overhang encroachment of 4.7 feet into the required 10-foot side setback without applying the option for flexibility in side setbacks for a single family dwelling within the GR2 district, and that a notice of zoning action be filed. That is the end of my staff report. I'm available for questions. And also, the applicant is on the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Hale?
Just point of clarification, if the applicant were to move the proposed building to the south 5 feet and use the flexibility of the side setbacks in the Girdwood area, then the staff would approve the variance, but just for the front setback. Is that right?
Through the chair, if the building is moved over 5 feet, then that north side setback could be reduced, or sorry, increased to 15 feet, and then the southern side setback could be reduced to 5 feet. That means that there's no longer a need for a variance for the side yard roof overhang. It's, it's, it's just made legal if the flexibility in side yard setbacks are applied. However, the applicant would still need a variance for the front yard setback, no matter what, to construct the accessory building.
And through the chair, and you guys would approve of that? Staff would approve of the front?
Yes, that's correct. Staff recommends approval of the, the front setback variance in denial of the side variance.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions by the board of the staff? Seeing none, will the applicant state your name and spell it for the record, please?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Aaron Potter, and that's A-R-O-N-P-O-E-T-T-E-R. It's often, very frequently, the last name is mispronounced, but that's okay. But thank everybody for their work on this variance application and taking the time this evening to review it. After reviewing the staff report of my application and request, I concur with staff's recommendation for approval of the front setback and denial of the side setback. It actually works better. I have more flexibility in additional, any potential future projects by exercising the flexibility within the municipal code for the side setbacks for Girdwood. So, like, again, I concur with what staff's conclusions are for my application there, and would be happy to revisit the location of the proposed building. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the applicant by board members? Anybody at all? Seeing none, are there any questions of the applicant by staff?
No, I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that's signed up to testify?
No, Madam Chair.
Mr. Potter, you have almost 9 minutes rebuttal. Is there anything else you wish to add?
Yeah, through the chair, no, that's, that's about it. I think it's a fairly straightforward, a fairly straightforward request. We do need the front variance to be approved so that we can continue to develop and add value to our property here in Girdwood. So, again, appreciate your time. Thank you.
So the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. And I'm not entirely sure how we're going to do this. I guess since we do have two, we do have the application, and the staff analyzed the front and side setbacks separately, and have separate recommendations, we will have two different motions, one for each setback. So I would entertain a positive motion on the front setback.
This is Dave Hale.
And so...
In case number 2021-0047, recommend approval of the variance. I mean, it's, it's, can we, can we do the motion just as one big one and then parse them out?
No. Two motions, so just do the front one first.
Okay. In case number 2021-0047, recommend approval of the variance for the front setback only, subject to staff recommendations for the front setback of numbers 1 and 2 on page 7. That's the first motion.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. This is Jonathan.
Okay. Mr. Hale, would you speak to your motion, please?
I concur with staff's recommendations, A through H, and have nothing to add. I think that the front setback one is a clear case of, they should get a variance for it.
Mr. Lang, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add. I also concur. I think that the front setback is necessary, a variance is necessary for the front setback.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to chime in? Seeing none, then we will vote.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Savina?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Ramardal?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Ms. McKay? Chair McKay?
Yes. Okay, so the motion passes, 7, 7-4, and no, nothing, nobody against it. And so, the variance for the front setback is approved. And now we'll take up the side setback. So, could I get a positive motion for the side setback, please?
This is Dave. I guess I might as well just keep going with this one.
Okay.
In case number 2021-0047, move to approve the variance for the side setback encroachment, subject to staff recommendations for the side setback, 1 through 2 on pages 7 and 8.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please?
This is Jonathan. I second.
Thank you. Mr. Hale, would you please speak to your motion?
Once again, I also agree with staff's recommendations on this and have nothing to add.
Mr. Lang?
Yes, I agree with the staff recommendations also, and I will not be supporting the motion.
Anyone else need to comment? Seeing none, we will vote.
Mr. Smythe?
No.
Mr. Hale?
No.
Ms. Savina?
No.
Mr. Lang?
No.
Mr. Quinn?
No.
Mr. Ramardal?
No.
Chair McKay?
So that motion fails, and the variance is denied. Okay, so that brings public hearings to a close. And continuing on with the agenda, no reports from the chair. Chair didn't show up. No, I'm sorry. No reports from the secretary. No reports from the committee. Board members, any comments?
Madam Chair, this is Jonathan.
Yes?
I have, I guess, kind of a point of discussion for maybe future cases, like the first one that we had tonight. In the staff report, it did not list the stream setback as being a zoning requirement, and I'm wondering if that's something that they should include in their staff reports in the future up front. Does that, does that make sense to everybody?
One more time?
And I guess maybe that's a question for staff, or maybe something that we should talk to staff about in the future.
So, restate that again?
With that, with the first case that we had tonight, it listed, you know, all of the, all of the zoning requirements, but it did not list, it listed the front, the side yard setbacks, the rear yard setbacks, but it did not list the stream setback.
Okay.
And, and that was definitely pertinent to that case.
So noted.
And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Any other board member comments? Seeing none, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Quinn, is there a second?
This is Jonathan, second.
We are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, guys. Thanks.